I'd like to call Dublin City Council Meeting in order. If you would, let's please stand, and everybody already is. And Councilman Paul Griggs will give us our invocation, and then we'll say the Pledge to the Flag.
Let us pray. To Heaven and Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all our blessings. We ask now that you bless this meeting, help lead and guide us in our decisions that we make. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make sure I get mine. I left mine. How I get it right here? All right. I guess I don't pay attention. Okay, thank you everyone for coming tonight. Before we get into our regular agenda items, we have a couple of special presentations. First one's Employee of the Quarter. Mr. Jones?
All right. I want to congratulate Katie Morton for being an employee of the first quarter of 2019 for the city of Dublin. Katie's married to Nathan Morton, who's an economics and history teacher at Dublin High School. They have two children, Sawyer, age seven, and Lily, age eighteen months. Katie came to work for the city of Dublin on April 4, 2016, as the Grants Administrative Coordinator. She is an experienced grant writer, a skilled multitasker, and an exceptional employee. We're very lucky to hire her from her old employer. Katie assists the Director of Grants Community Development, Deborah, there she is, in research of potential grant funding opportunities, preparation of grant applications, coordination, and administration of multiple grant projects, and we've got a lot going on right now. So they're both very busy. And community development initiatives. She also performs general administrative duties and provides office support as needed. She is just a wonderful employee, has a great attitude. Deborah brags on her up and down without end. So Katie, if you could come forward. Curtis has got a little presentation.
Cousins. Kind of appropriate.
Are y'all cousins? Uh-oh.
I smell a rat.
Yeah, that's right.
It's so hard to present you with the employee of the quarter for 2019. Thank you all that's with the city of Dublin.
Thank you.
And if you're interested, we're our supervisor, and they are pretty much the way off they get. A little bit extra, some extra right there.
A little monetary.
I see Sawyer sitting back there, and I'll tell y'all something about him. He likes wrestling. Not wrestling now, but wrestling. All right. Okay, our next presentation is by the Burke Brothers.
How's everyone doing?
Fine. How you doing?
Good, thanks. So on behalf of my brother and our client, Coke Daniels, who's the Writer-Director of His, Hers, and the Truth, we wanted to just come and publicly thank you all, the city, for all of the support that you provided for us to bring Hollywood to Dublin. It was a tremendous success for us. The cast and the crew thoroughly enjoyed it, to the point now we are going to do a film from start to finish in Dublin. The film is about eighty-five percent written by the writer. He has actually relocated to Dublin from Los Angeles, and we are happy to have him here. This film is something that we are all, as a community and a city, to be very, very proud of. This film is going to employ a lot of people from Dublin Lawrence County area, both in front of the camera and behind the camera. On May 18th and May 19th, we're going to hold an open casting call for over twenty-five roles, speaking roles, that we're going to cast right out of Dublin. Our cast is an all-star cast, that most of the names will be very familiar to everyone in Dublin. This is something that's going to change our community forever. And moving forward, we did not share this earlier, but the bigger picture is that we are looking to build a major studio and soundstage here in Dublin to produce additional films. So we are now currently looking for forty to fifty acres of land that we can build on.
Realtors are excited.
So we've never, our intent has never been to just come and do one thing, but to continue to build and do more things so we can give back to our community. And we're just so thrilled and excited to be here, and the city has just been really behind us. And if by the end of the year, we'll go into production in July, if by the end of the year, when this film comes out, everyone in this nation does not know about Dublin, Georgia, we have let ourselves down. So we know they will all know about Dublin, Georgia. So thank you.
All right.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Just thank y'all for keeping us in the loop. Thank you for what you've already done, and look forward to many more episodes coming forward like we have currently.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm auditioning for a role.
That's what I forgot to mention in the meeting, too, is we do have a city council scene, so I'm actually looking at you guys and thinking, you know, yeah, this is a good-looking group here, so, yeah.
Camera ready, camera ready.
Now, how long have you been in Dublin so far?
I've been in Dublin almost two months now.
So it's a lot like Los Angeles.
It is, very similar. It's actually more exciting and more to do, so I was just like, you know, I went to a couple amusement parks here locally, and it was great. No, but for real, I mean, everybody's been great here. I really love this city. Everybody's embraced me, and, you know, my last project and as well as this project. And, you know, I'm excited, and like Vanzal said, I really want to do you guys proud and make sure that the city is, you know, on board and proud with what we're doing to represent, you know, Dublin on a national level, an international level, actually, you know, with the film. So I just want to thank you guys for all your support, and your community is great, and it's a beautiful city and a great place to tell this story.
Thank you very much. We appreciate y'all taking time to come by and catch us all up.
And here you have to support your own weight, how you're coming along with your fishing skills.
I caught two fish immediately. I mean, Mrs. Williams cheated a little bit and threw some food in there to bait them, but they did jump right on the hook, and they cooperated. Put them back, too, so there's no cruelty to the animals.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank y'all very much.
Thank you all very much.
Hey, how you doing? Eric Cates, Senator.
I'm good. Brag rounds.
I think I'm smelling some gas in my yard out here.
All right, in what area are you smelling it?
Over here in this area. The meter's on that side over there.
Okay, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna check the meter and make sure there's not a leak there.
Okay.
Then we'll locate the line and put down a couple holes, just to check underground to make sure you don't have a leak. We'll check each corner of your house. If you could, just stay on the porch.
Okay.
If you think you have a gas leak, we're on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Call us at 478-277-5048.
We've been serving the Dublin Lawrence community for over ninety years here at Williamson's Bakery. We specialize in donuts, cakes, pies, cupcakes, cookies, birthday cakes. They're our business, not a hobby. And don't forget our large selection of cheese straws. For special orders, contact us on Facebook, Instagram, or better yet, just come get you some. When you stop by, be sure to try our all-new Pig in the Blankets. We have bacon, sausage, and chicken. We're located at 1634 Veterans Boulevard, Dublin, Georgia. With the hot freshest donuts, come to Williamson's Bakery. We proudly support our area athletics.
Item number one is the approval of March 28, 2019, city council meeting minutes. You have a copy of those.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Jones and a second by Brown that we pay the bills, or approve the minutes, any discussion there?
You can go ahead, and we'll approve the bills, too.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Our attorney looks like we might need to do it separately. Is that right? Are we all right?
We can consider Mr. Brown made a motion, and Mr. Edward second, and y'all got...
All right, good deal. All right. Item number three is approval of purchases over $3,000. Mr. Jones?
We have three purchases for your approval. First is a roll-off truck for sanitation. We received four bids, actually five bids, from four different bidders. The low bid was for $138,174 from Freightliner of Savannah, and staff recommendation is to award to Freightliner of Savannah.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Griggs and a second by Mr. Davis that we approve the purchase, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next one is a dump truck for the gas department. We solicited bids for this also. We had three. One was, didn't have all their paperwork together, but the bids were very close. And the low bid is $43,950 from the Next Tran Truck Center of Macon, Georgia, for a Ford F-550 with a TEC dump body. Staff recommendations to award to the low bidder.
I hear a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Jones and a second, or first by the motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Mr. Edwards that we approve the purchase, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
The third purchase is a truck for Public Works. We received several bids here. Two didn't quite meet the specs. We're looking for a four-wheel drive, and they did not bid a four-wheel drive. The low bidder is from Wade Ford of Smyrna, Georgia, in the amount of $30,938. And staff recommendations award to the low bidder.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Davis and a second by Mr. Griggs that we approve the purchase, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item number four is a presentation by representatives of the Dublin City Schools on the literacy program. And I think Ms. Jamie Ray and her sidekick are here. Or as Fred calls y'all, the dynamic duo.
That'll work. My sidekick is making me stand here alone. I'm Jamie Ray. I'm working with Dublin City Schools. I manage the L4GA grant, which is the grant, I'll see if I can get this right, literacy for living, learning, and leading. And we were awarded the grant back before I was hired, and Dr. Williams and several of the staff members interviewed me. And I also handle multi-tiered system of supports for our students. I previously worked with the Governor's Office of Student Achievement with a reading program. I was the manager for the state and visited lots of schools. And I have to say this about my present superintendent. I've met lots of superintendents across the state, but not one that still has a heart for children like Dr. Williams does. So a lot of times when people get up in the ranks, sometimes they forget why they're there, but not so with him. So I just want to remind everyone of that before I go into my spiel. I wasn't sure if you all were aware that two-thirds of Georgia's children do not read proficiently. They aren't reading on grade level. That was the reason that Governor Deal enacted the Governor's Office Reading Mentors Program, for which I served the former six years. Our statistics in our community are not any better than the state's. So what are we gonna do about this epidemic? Are we gonna leave it just to our schools to handle? We've tried that, and the fact is that we can't do this alone. We need community support. Children who can't read proficiently by the end of third grade are more likely to experience poor health, have discipline problems, become teen parents, and drop out of high school. And as adults, they're more likely to spend time in prison, struggle with unemployment, and face shorter life expectancies. So it's our desire to work with community partners such as you all and anyone else who will have us, committed to ensuring that all children stay on track to achieve reading proficiency by the end of third grade, and we need everyone's help. Promoting literacy in our community won't be just good for the children and the families of those children, but for our community as a whole, producing work-ready students and college and career-bound children. So we're just asking for your support in moving this forward and getting the word out how important this is to our community. And that's really all I had to say. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Ms. Seal carries my cards around for me sometimes because I can't remember them and passes them out to folks. I'm available by email or telephone, and I have been a passionate advocate for children's literacy since 1993, when I started teaching kindergarten. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Coming. Okay, item number five is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to adopt a records retention management plan for the city of Dublin. And I guess this is Mr. Paul, is this you, or...
Yes, sir. I can discuss it if you'd like me to. The city is required to have a records retention policy adopted. This ordinance will accomplish that. The Georgia Archives Division of the University System of Georgia has a board that meets every two years to review these schedules that they promulgate. And basically, what this ordinance will do is adopt their schedules that they have, which is what a lot of municipalities have done. They've taken all the work out of this for your staff to come up with these schedules. And they already address each department of the city and all the records that we maintain. And so this ordinance will adopt those and make us compliant with what we're required to do.
Mr. Jones, do you mind reading the proposed ordinance?
I do not. Ordinance number 1904, an ordinance by the mayor and city council of the city of Dublin adding a new section, three, I'm sorry, 2-4, records management, Article 1 of Chapter 2, Administration of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Dublin, adopting certain records retention schedules of the Georgia Archives Division of the University System of Georgia to designate the city clerk as the records management coordinator, to authorize the city clerk to establish other policies concerning the retention of records and the disposition of records, and to set an effective date.
All right. We will now close our city council meeting and open a public hearing and ask if there's anyone here to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance. Not, is there anyone opposed to the ordinance? Here none, we will now close the public hearing, reopen the city council meeting, and turn it over to council for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Mr. Brown that we approve the ordinance, any discussion? Mr. Daniels, do you mind calling the role?
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Jones. Yes.
Councilman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilman Bruce.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
Hi, I'm Jeff Cannon, President, Citizens Bank of Lawrence County. If you're presently a customer of ours, we'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for allowing us to be your bank. We appreciate the confidence you have placed in us and enjoy providing you with the most up-to-date banking products and services to satisfy your needs. If you're not a current customer, we would like to invite you to stop by and let us show you true community banking at its best. We concentrate on our local community, doing our part to make Dublin and Lawrence County a better place to live, work, play, and retire. We recently introduced two new products, eStatements and Access Now, our mobile banking app. Both of these products will help to make banking with us more convenient and will also help to provide you with a safer and more secure banking experience. So for all your banking needs, just give us a call or stop by and let us show you personal banking at its best. Citizens Bank of Lawrence County, member FDIC and an equal housing lender.
Item number six is discussion and/or action on award of a contract to Terricon Consultants, Inc., for the Turkey Creek Waterline Replacement Project.
Our large water line out that feeds the rest areas on I-16 has a bad leak. It's under the creek. We can't get down to repair it. We're gonna have to drill in a new line beside it to get water back to the rest areas. We've looked at different fixes. That directional drill is the way to go. There are layers of rock in that area, and we want to hire this company, Terricon, to do geotechnical drilling there to find the layers of rock, so that when we drill through there, we can avoid them and not have our line next to them. We don't want to hit them anyway, they're hard to drill through. But the cost of that service is $9,459. Staff recommendation is to hire Terricon to do the work.
Okay. Counsel, you've heard staff recommendation.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Davis and a second by Mr. Griggs to approve the contract, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number seven is discussion and/or action on award of contract to East Coast Asphalt LLC for street resurfacing and restriping.
We'll be paving the following streets this year in Dublin. Hudson Drive, Art Street, Dixie Street, Eighth Street, West Mary Street, Kingsby Street, Cullen Street, Village Circle, South Lawrence Street, Belmont Drive, Stonewall Street, Kingsby Street, Hamilton Street, and Mitchell Street, and potentially Oak Street. We're looking at it. It's deteriorating really fast, if you've ridden over there and looked at it. Now, that's not the whole street. Sometimes it's the whole street, sometimes it's a section that's especially bad. We received four bids. The low bid was from East Coast Asphalt LLC at $305,607.61, and the staff recommendation is to award to East Coast Asphalt.
Okay. Y'all heard staff's recommendation. What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Griggs, a motion by Mr. Griggs, a second by Mr. Jones that we approve the streets, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor say aye.
We don't know where they're gonna start.
You know, we're starting, we're ordinating at a good time this year. We've been ordinating late in the year, and that's about time the bad weather hits. So we're doing it now, so they can get in here while it's hot. Won't be as much rain, and the temperature will be a lot better. They can't, the temperature's gotta be 45 and rising for them to pave, I believe, is the right number. Engineers telling me yes. So in the past, we've been in the fall, and a lot of times it's just too cold. And now the temperature will be there every day, basically, so they'll be in here paving. I don't remember exactly what the last, the drop-dead day is.
Well, after the award tonight, we'll meet with the contractor and check their schedule. So the start date, then they'll have a contract on six days to complete the work.
About July.
And then they got rain to let, you know, if a hurricane comes through, something, God, I just, I shouldn't have said that. Yes, sir, we expect midsummer. We expect midsummer, so...
All right. Any other discussion?
Does moisture, like if it rains, do they have to wait long enough for the moisture to get out of the road before they can, so it has to be a certain level?
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. And we do want to thank Mr. Jones, he's been right and heard on these, so appreciate the good work. Okay, item number eight is a first reading of an ordinance to add a new section, 6.2, to Article 6, area, yard, and height requirements of Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances to provide for a minimum square footage for single-family dwellings, two-family dwelling units, and multifamily dwelling units. Mr. Jones?
This ordinance number 19-06 is zoning amendment ordinance by the mayor and city council to add a new section, 6.2, to Article 6, area, yard, and height requirements of Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances to provide for a minimum square footage for single-family dwellings, two-family dwelling units, and multifamily dwelling units, to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
Okay. Our second reading in public hearing will be on Thursday, May the 2nd. Okay, item number nine is discussion and/or action on award of a contract to Thomason Hutton Engineering for the I-16 water main and the Honeysuckle Road Pump Station Force Main Emergency Repairs.
We've talked about one of these, the I-16 water line, and the second problem we've really got is the Honeysuckle Academy Avenue Force Main has just, is just breaking over and over again, so we really need to get it repaired. This is for Thomason Hutton to provide the services of designing these projects, working through the bidding process, and then for overseeing the construction and any consult we need during the project. So the total of those two projects is $48,310. That's about forty percent of that is Honeysuckle, and sixty percent of it is I-16 water line.
Okay, you've heard staff's recommendation.
Move for approval, Mayor. Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown and a second by Mr. Jones that we approve the contract, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number 10 is discussion and/or action of award of contract to Midstate Striping for Walt Derry at Industrial Boulevard Project.
I hope this will be the front page for a while here. We are at Walt Derry and Industrial. We are converting that intersection, which we've had several wrecks out there, to a four-way stop. Eventually, we want to make this a roundabout. We're gonna be looking at Hillcrest, I mean, not Hillcrest, Industrial Drive, to be a T-Splotch project in the future, but that's several years down the line. So as a temporary fix, we ask the engineers at Thomason Hutton, the traffic engineers there, to do a traffic study and recommend the best alternatives. The roundabout is the best long-term alternative. The best temporary alternative, they said, is to put a four-way stop there. So everybody be super careful. We gotta get that word out. That is gonna change, so it's gonna be confusing for people. We're gonna have lots of signage, blinking signs, blinking lights, big stop signs, but it's a change, so everybody's really gonna have to be watching it. This is for the road striping, and it'll have rumble strips all the way around. So this contract is with, who did I say? Midstate Striping, I'm sorry.
Yes.
In the amount of $5,500 to do that work for us.
Okay, when do you think that'll be start?
What's the date is? April the, May the 5th is actually, that we're gonna take the bags off, 24th, April 24th. The signs will be up, but they'll be covered.
Okay, and how about the striping and all that? That'll go in before 24 too. Okay. Okay?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Second.
Motion by Mr. Brown, a second by Mr. Jones, that we approve the contract with Midstate Striping.
Was it?
It was.
Yeah, he did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Hi, I'm Anna Grace with Myers Equipment and Supply, your dealer for the complete line of Can-Am side-by-sides and ATV products. For hunting, farming, or riding the trails, Can-Am has the models you need. If you like a little sport to your ride, choose the versatile Can-Am Commander. With the best-in-class power and versatility, this side-by-side features the essentials that change the off-road landscape. Industry-leading performance, precision-engineered handling, and rider-focused design are all on display every time you hit the throttle. Come into Myers Equipment today and see the full line of Can-Am ATVs and side-by-sides. Can-Am, the ride says it all.
Come to Roach Farm and Garden and take home something beautiful. Our gardens by the river has an excellent selection of statuaries, bird baths, fountains, and a wide variety of flowers, fruit trees, and shrubs.
Item number eleven is discussion and/or action on resolution establishing new residential and commercial garbage collection rates.
All right. This is resolution number nineteen dash oh nine, a resolution of the city of Dublin, Georgia, by and through its mayor and council, establishing new residential and commercial garbage collection rates to amend any conflicting ordinance or resolution and to establish an effective date. This would move our garbage rates monthly from twenty dollars to twenty-two dollars and fifty cent, the commercial from thirty dollars to thirty-two dollars and fifty cent, and other rates would be adjusted accordingly.
Okay. Staff, I mean, counsel, do you have a, any comments? Are you on motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Griggs and a second by Mr. Edwards that we.
Could I interject? Just want to make sure that the purpose of ordinance is not to change the white goods sort of stuff pickup that we do beside the road, the couches, chairs, things. So, if somebody could amend the ordinance to, that those would stay the same.
And that isn't the ordinance.
I mean, the resolution, I apologize. The resolution so that those would stay the same. And then we will not, make sure we did not change those. We don't think we did, but some of them might be a little different. But we want to make sure those did not change.
Okay, let's see here. Mr. Griggs, would you amend your ordinance or your motion to include that?
Yes. Um, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Edwards, you amend your second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? You got what we're amending it to?
We're playing Texas roll.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Yes.
All right. We're gaining on it. Item number twelve is discussion and/or action on resolution authorizing the DDA to hold the Bon Tents Crawfish Festival. Do we want to hear from the DDA, or do we want to just approve the ordinance?
If they wanted to, talk about it just right quick. Tell us the date and time and everything.
All right. Good evening. We are requesting your approval to host the Bon Tents Crawfish Festival. We gotta work on the pronunciation. I say Bon Tents myself. Bon Tents Crawfish Festival on Saturday, May eleventh, in downtown Dublin. We are requesting to close two blocks of West Jackson Street and fence off an area to charge admission to come into the crawfish festival. It'll include live music all day, a dining area, arts and crafts vendors, and a crawbaby carnival for the kids. Children twelve and under are no charge for the event. And the roads will, we're requesting the roads closed from eight AM to eleven PM, and requesting that you give Lance the authority to allow us to sell alcohol within the event. We think it's gonna be a great, family-friendly day. We've never done one like this before, but I think that we have about fifty-six thousand visitors a year come to events that we host or partner with those that do host. And so, I think this is another way for us to get more people into downtown and getting them shopping and eating and having a good time.
Can I get a clarification on something?
Yes.
So, the DDA themselves won't be selling alcohol. They're just gonna allow the businesses to sell.
Yes. So, there are two existing businesses within that area that have a current alcohol license. This will allow them to vend alcohol just within the event premises. And patrons can travel just within the event, as long as it's in a special cup that we've itemized in the resolution.
We'll see.
Any other discussion?
No, nobody else will be able to bring in alcohol to sell inside that area that we're discussing, right?
No, sir. There is no other food or drink allowed inside the gates. And we have posted clearly on the website a list of items that will not be allowed in the gate.
How about the security? Have y'all already worked that out?
Yes. Our, our police officers will be on site. We've been approved to have nine police officers there, one at each of the entrance gates, and six roaming throughout the day. Thank you, the Dublin Police Department, for that. Sure.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank y'all.
I can read the resolution. Resolution number nineteen dash ten, a resolution of the mayor and city council for authorizing the downtown Dublin Development Authority, DDA, to utilize a portion of downtown Dublin for a special event, to authorize the carrying of alcoholic beverages in a designated portion of downtown, to authorize licensed restaurants to sell alcohol by the drink within the designated area for the special event, and authorize the city manager to approve any other permits needed for the event.
Okay, I hear a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jones, you second.
Mr. Davis, my, Mr. Davis.
Okay. Got a motion by Mr. Griggs and a second by Mr. Davis that we approve the resolution. Any discussion? Hear none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, item number thirteen is citizens' comments. Are there any citizens here tonight that would like to address counsel? If not, we'll go to council comments. And Mr. Griggs, we'll start with you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank everybody for coming. Everybody that took part in making presentations tonight, we certainly do appreciate it and look forward to it. And hope that everybody just has a great week. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Edwards?
All right. I want to congratulate Katie for her award. I know they had to leave earlier. And I'd like to thank the Vons Brothers and your whole team of people. I know it takes a lot of people to pull together what y'all do, and I appreciate all that y'all do and the motivation, y'all, and all the time it takes to get all this together. So, I appreciate y'all coming back to Dublin and keeping things rolling here. And thank you for Dublin Police Department for all y'all do with the security here and all y'all do day-to-day, and also the fire department and all they do day-to-day out there. And thank all the city employees for all they do. And I don't know about y'all, but a recurring pattern was every time we spent money in that, Matthew Bradshaw's name was on that piece of paper. So, just giving them a hard time. And I appreciate all the engineering does as well on there and all that DDA does as well on there.
Sir, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, man. I'd like to say thank you to everyone that came out tonight. And I also like to congratulate Eldrick for their award they got earlier today. Also, our U-council receiving an award for finishing first in their region in Secretary of State competition and also fourth in the state. Congratulations to them. And the Burke Brothers, thank y'all for what you're doing for the city, bringing to Dublin. This is gonna be truly, like you say, put Dublin on the map. We thank y'all for doing that. Like also, literacy program, go out and support. I think that we do need to support that and get it out in the community, the right community, the community we're looking to serve. Get it out. Talk with the people that needs to be there and get it out. Because I was an advocate readers growing up, still is. So, I think everyone need to, you two need to get involved in reading. Like to also tell everyone to be safe from the storm that we're about to get. You know, take cover. Be safe. Out there, drive safe. And also, happy resurrection weekend for everyone. Let us remember the reason for this weekend. If he hadn't gotten off the cross, we would not, what would we be in? So, let's thank Jesus for staying on that cross and being there with us and eyeing us to be saved and accepting to our lives. So, thank you, and everyone remember that.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to thank Katie Morton for her service and congratulate her on employee of the quarter. Burke Brothers, thank y'all for what you've done and what you're gonna continue to do. We appreciate your commitment to your hometown. To Jamie Ray, thank you for your presentation. And I have a kindergartner right now, and so he's learning. To Tara and the DDA, thank you for what you do on a daily basis to make the downtown area a better place. Looking forward to that event. And would then like to echo what Mr. Jones said as far as a happy Easter and everybody remember while we celebrate that.
And I don't know what I'd do without you and Lance.
I just used him skipping me, so.
I thought you was pointing at a bug or something.
Thanks to every, thanks to everybody for being here. I want to commend Katie for the outstanding job that she's doing. And her family was here also. I want to thank the Burke Brothers. And also, Coke Daniels, I have to make sure I say that properly because I think of another Daniels whenever I'm referring to him. So, I want to thank you all very much for the contribution and investments that you all are making in Dublin and Lawrence County. And for the Burke Brothers to, I just want to commend you for giving back to the community. A lot of people that go off and have success, they don't bring it back home, but we commend you all for doing that. Also, want to thank Ms. Jamie Ray for the children advocacy. We appreciate your presentation. And Tara, we just appreciate all of the hard work that you do and all of this, all the, I want to thank all of the city employees for the work that you do. And do, we want to give praise to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for this upcoming weekend.
Thanks, sir. What other name, Curtis? Mr. Josh Powell.
Just want to wish everybody a happy Easter.
Blake, Mr. Jones?
I think you said it all.
All right. Okay, item number fifteen is I'd like to ask the city council to approve a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss real estate.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Edwards and a second by Mr. Griggs that we approve going to discuss real estate in executive session. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.